It's nine, are we all here? Looks like we are. Okay. Well, here we go. Goal setting for 2022 and a nice review too. So let's start with the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Harding. So today we've got a full agenda for you. I'd like to kick off by providing each of the department directors, you know, five to 10 minutes to just review with council some of the successes in 2021, as well as some of the major planned initiatives in 2022. And I think it's important to get that on the table. There's a lot of work going on right now. Our departments are doing great work for the residents and a lot of large deferred projects that are being brought forward. Some technology, some building projects, some process improvements. And I always think it's important for the council to have that in mind and ask any questions of the department directors as well during these types of goal-setting sessions. Once we kind of spend that first half hour or so, if it takes that long on the department presentations, what we're going to do is ask each one of you to go through the goals and priorities that you felt were important for the upcoming year so that your colleagues can hear you, listen to it, listen to what you have to say, your rationale, and you know, and think about where you're coming from. Once we've wrapped up those proposed priorities, we're going to give each of you, we're going to give the council 15 minutes or so, just kind of think through what you've heard and go back and select your top seven or eight priorities, you know, based on whether you've been persuaded with your colleagues' rationales or have any questions from that perspective. Once that's completed, staff will take a few minutes to actually tabulate where we are, what priorities float to the top from the majority of council, and we'll continue that discussion. So I'm hoping that we chose not to bring a facilitator in. We're going to try to do our best today. And I hope you're pleased with what you've here. So Heather, I'd like to kick off with you or Andy to, from the city manager's office overview and get the show on the road.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and take lead here. I'm going to start the PowerPoint presentation at this point. Let's see. And we have, from the city manager's office here, we have Andrea, Thomas, Clay, and myself to talk about things going on in the city manager's office. All right, so I'm going to pass it over to Thomas to talk about the department's successes in 2021.
Good morning. As you can see from this slide, the city manager's department comprises city administration, city clerk's office, human resources, IT, and public affairs. And as an aggregate group in 2021, our success is really focused on infrastructure items. So in three broad categories here, how city hall is structured and how we work IT and then communications. So on the sort of city hall structure, you can see we had more than 30 recruitments, over 1,000 applications, 19 new hires, which is, I believe, a record for Palm Desert. We established monthly management meetings and professional development programs. Our supervisors are getting together monthly. That's a brand-new thing for the city and a lot of conversation about culture and values and best practices and a lot of new things there. We consolidated and reorganized department, including the creation of a one-stop shop for permits. We also improved technology across city hall and that kind of connected departments across the board. On the communication side, we enhanced communications with website redesign. We launched Engage Palm Desert. We also launched the weekly administrative report to help council and city manager communication, city staff communication. And then we also worked on improving the management and reporting of the CIP.
Hi, I'm Clayvon Elf, IT manager. I'm going to give a quick overview of our upcoming projects. Like, you know, as Thomas said, we made some significant investments in our IT infrastructure. Next year, we'll be focusing on some resiliency and efficiencies through those new products. The resiliency will be investments in our cybersecurity and disaster recovery, our business continuity, that'll be a large focus for us. And the efficiency, we're going to be taking a deep look at our ERP solutions, which is, you know, our financial, our land management, our permitting, document imaging solutions. We'll be identifying gaps or inefficiencies and finding technology or business process improvements to fill those gaps. There'll also be some new products. For instance, we're going to be launching a new employee evaluation solution. And Andrea will continue that.
Good morning, everyone. Andrea Staley, I'm the human resources manager here at the City of Palm Desert. Still excited and happy to be here and to be a part of this team. So I'm really excited to announce the initiatives that we have going on within the HR department. As Clay had mentioned, we're looking to improve our efficiency and effectiveness through more online modules in order to assist our employees as well as our supervisors. We're going to implement an evaluation system that will be electronic as well as an onboarding program, which would be electronic for our new employees, around the thought of the classification and compensation realm. As we all know, that is something that we are looking into and evaluating. And we're looking to implement the results of the class and comp study. And then we just will continue to build on the organizational culture, team building and defining our, redefining, I should say, our core values, which really focus us on the development of our employees and hold them accountable to what we truly value, such as integrity and innovation and customer service. And so it's just really making sure that everyone is on the same page to serve our external customers as well as our internal customers. And last but not least, we are looking and very excited to establish our Palm Desert U, which is a university here internally that we want to roll out to all of our employees to help them grow and develop professionally as well. So all around for this next major year, it's about efficiency, effectiveness, accountability, and making sure that everyone's on the same page as we serve our customers.
All right, I got the next couple here. And to continue on the theme of efficiency, one of the things the clerk's office is working on is staff report workflow and agenda management software implementation. This will be a huge improvement for our current process and we all are looking forward to it. Also, the city manager's office is facilitating many projects going on in departments. And one of them is working out economic development to build a mall master plan to assist with the redevelopment of the mall. Also, the city manager's office is facilitating with priority one, Coachella Valley, to get a four-year campus here in Palm Desert. And that kind of sums up what we have for our major initiatives for 2022 in the city manager's office. Next up, we have development services. So I'm going to pass it over to Martine.
Good morning, Mayor, members of the city council. Can you hear me okay? Okay, I'm going to tag team this couple of slides here or this slide with Eric. As you know, this year has been a transition here for development services. We've done a little bit of some restructuring. We've consolidated and merged economic development into the development services department to allow us to create some more collaboration and some efficiencies as we work with our business community and developers. We've also created and moved into development services special programs. That is our environmental programs and the art program as well. And of course, as was mentioned, the permit center, that's a new division that was centralized in our billing department that allows for more efficiencies with building permits. So throughout 2021, some of the department's successes included hosting brokers forums for our community and the real estate agencies, our brokers, to provide them information and also provide them an avenue for them to provide us with input as to how we can provide services for them. And one of the biggest department successes is the COVID response that happened in 2020 and also in 2021. But with the city council's assistance, we were able to launch over $2 million in COVID business relief for our businesses and some of our other nonprofit entities. The Unite Palm Desert program was hugely successful, well-received. A lot of different programs, including PD plates, forgivable loans, rent relief, were part of this great program. And also during 2021, we worked with our business community and specifically our restaurants to develop the dining deck program that would allow them to have an outdoor dining area. And we developed specific guidelines to address safety. We also assisted with the dining deck grant, which allowed for additional funding to implement those changes. We've also, of course, been working on and have launched the Palm Desert I-Hub. This, of course, is a partnership between CEVAP and Cal State San Bernardino. And we're very, very proud to announce, obviously, through the launch of this is that we have three amazing programs there, not only to incubate technology startups, but also we have the entrepreneur and also the cybersecurity program and the hospitality management program. The other programs that we've also launched is the solid waste and recycling programs. We're very proud to be able to move this forward. This is SB 1383. This is our organics recycling program. And we're very happy to announce that we're going to move this forward and do some good things with our community. In the permit center and our billing department, we've launched the virtual inspection program. And this has also created an opportunity for us to be more efficient, effective, and provide services to our developers and contractors. The department also launched and created or completed the Desert Willow Golf Management and Maintenance Contract RFP. And we're moving forward to develop a new contract with Kemper Sports to manage our desert will a golf resort into the future. A lot of other things that we've been working on include, you know, working with our contracts to make more efficiencies with our business license program, design services, and also plan check services that we've been able to be more efficient and effective with our contracts. And the last item here is that we've basically been able to try to have some, we've been able to develop a survey for our permit center that will allow us to get some feedback and some surveys that will be able to improve our customer service. And we're happy to announce that 92% of our customers said goodbye with our services here at permit center. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eric, and he's going to talk about some of our major initiatives for 2022.
Yeah, good evening or good morning, Mayor and city council. You know, some of these projects are well underway. And one of our major initiatives for this coming year is both the Discover Palm Desert Visitor Center in Lupine Plaza. So we have a subcommittee set up now for Lupine Plaza. We've been working with our Economic Development Subcommittee on the visitor center and ensuring that visitor services have adequate space and use for that building. So we hope to actually host a study session on both of these items with you in about another month or so and show you the progress for both of these. Major initiatives that we're going to continue working on, though, is the Surplus Land Act and the selling of city property. There are several projects that are already in the works, including Desert Serve and the Vitalia Project. We have others that are still going through the entitlement process, and we're trying to find ways to actually dispose of that property in a timely manner. Other properties with the surplus land act that the city controls have to go through a formal process identified if they have any sort of government purpose for the city. And if not, we also have to advertise those for sales in accordance with what the state put out there for us. So we're working pretty heavily with the surplus land act. We also have another number of software upgrades for our department. We want to implement e-track it, and we're ready to roll out with that here by the end of the month with a small portion of that. That allows customers to actually interface with the permit center completely online. They can submit their plans, they can check the status of it, they can schedule inspections. That's going to help quite a bit in alleviating some of the work that the permit centers tasked with now and allow for better interface with the customers that are actually pulling permits. We'll also be implementing new software for waste and recycling programs for reporting on that. Then also a new software for a co-compliance team, which will help in their efforts out in the city. You know, Development Services is also working with Public Works jointly on the North Sphere Regional Park. We'll have a report for you this Thursday, asking for some direction. Hopefully, working with the Parks Commission and then working with the community in the north part of the city to understand their desires and needs and wants for that park as well. There's going to be a number of new economic development programs that we're working on. I want us to continue with Unite Palm Desert. Want us to look at a business expansion and retention program. That's the bear that's listed there. And then, of course, we're working on the bike racks and a security camera center program now. And the bike racks and security camera program should be closing out here soon, the next couple of months. One thing now with the merger of Development Services, Building and Safety, and Economic Development, we want to do a complete 360 review of our development process for when someone turns in a permit to go through the architectural review or planning commissioner city council process to getting a building permit and inspections. We want to take basically most of this year to study that process, identify where we can streamline that process and remove any inefficiencies there. Lastly, with this merger, again, we have seven divisions for development services. We have management specialists that assist in each one of those divisions. And part of that is because we manage and host a number of city commissions, from architectural review to historic preservation to some of the other planning commissions that we have as well. And so with those management specialists, we want to make sure that each one of them is cross-trained across the divisions. That's going to help us quite a bit to make sure that we're filling in any gaps that we may have and that everyone is trained. So that's kind of what we have going on for 2022.
Good morning, everyone. Janet Moore, Director of Finance. I wanted to share with you some of the successes of the department. We're more inward-facing than outward-facing. So some of the things that we have done during the year has been in cooperation with other departments. So I'm not, if I don't mention them specifically, it's because it's multiple departments. But one of the things that we did this year is we had a pilot program to improve our interdepartmental communications. We had kind of visit finance for a day and we spent some time. We piloted this with the permit center. And our permit center folks came over one at a time to finance and sat here for an hour. And then someone from finance actually went over and sat in the permit center so we could better understand how to cooperate between the two departments to get more efficiencies to the public and do better service delivery. The other thing that we did, that we finished in 2021, was we refunded the bonds for Section 29 and University Park. This is significant because it lowers the property taxes for the property owners. So a lot of times when we talk about things that we do internally and the processes that we take, we don't think about the ultimate gain. The ultimate gain is this saves money to the property owners out in those areas and could spur development. I know we know University Park is doing, has projects going on out there. And this could have been kind of the, what I'll call the launch point for them to get started again. We also, one of the biggest things that we did this year is we have an interactive online budget. It has real-time data. So if you want to look at how much money each department has spent in various areas or various line items, you can see that it is real-time. It's up till tomorrow or up till last night at about 6:00 PM. So all you need to do is click on the city's website, go to the finance page, and click on budget for this year. And you will see that you can look at any of the information within the general fund budget and get real-time data. During the year, we implemented internal digital signature practices. The council adopted a policy that we would accept these. We are moving those out towards city contracts as well now to make more efficiencies with our vendors and our contractors. We completed a comprehensive review of fire services coverage areas and response times. This was very important in planning for the forest station that we'll be talking about as a major initiative for '22. But that is one of the things that we needed to know first. What were our times? Where were we lacking in service areas under the five-minute timeframe? We have coverage and we have mutual response aid with other areas, including the county. But we wanted to make sure that we were keeping within our goals. We centralized city leases and liaison communications with our intergovernmental partners. This is just putting something that kind of had been all over city hall in various locations into one spot, and that's Mr. Ariane. He is kind of our intergovernmental liaison with a lot of our partners. This has proven very helpful, as well as at Parkview, in that we have a one central point of contact. And so people know who they can contact. In collaboration with Development Services, we now have business license online, renewals and applications. We had a few hiccups in the beginning, but I believe now it's working much smoother. We've gotten feedback that they appreciate being able to pay with a credit card or pay online or renew their license when they want. So that was a great big success for all of us last year. We streamlined multiple processes for staff efficiencies. And one of that, I was being generic there when I say that, but one of the things are other things that are being paid online as well now, including TOT remittances and things like that. We've also been able to pay some of our vendors and contractors via EFT. This has been a huge impact on the processes in the finance department in that we have more efficiencies with staff time and we're able to get those payments in without having to go to the bank or something like that. Also, the new procurement big contract software that is, if we're not up and running, we're very, very close. So that was also a success that we had. This is going to allow multiple vendors to actually get into the system early and they can be notified of any bids that have come up, any RFPs. It gives them an opportunity. It also allows multiple users within the city way more than our previous software. So this is going to be something that all employees and all departments are able to utilize. Initiatives for 2022, we're going to continue to improve service delivery through innovation and policy updates. Remove red tape, that's what we're trying to do. We have someone that's really focused in on that, we're going to get that. We've already removed a significant amount of red tape from the purchasing process and things like that. We're just going to keep expanding that out. Launch a revised Phase Two of the comprehensive fee study. The fee study is actually, it started before the pandemic. We had to pause that and we had to pause because our processes dramatically changed. And any work that they would have done prior or during the pandemic, it virtually would have been useless, we would have had to start over. And obviously, all the things that we've talked about that we've made successes in, those are things that all impact that fee study. We're going to prepare and design for the construction of the city's forest fire station. You learned about that at the last council meeting. Further simplification of financial summary reports. This is something that I endeavored to start when I took this position about six years ago. And we've been making great progress over the time, even most recently with the finance committee. But we're going to keep doing that. Also, initiative for next year is to compile an award-winning budget to, in the format for a distinguished budget award. As many of you know, we've received the distinguished financial report award for 24 years consecutively. And we have a very, very good start on submitting for the budget for the distinguished budget award now that we're online. So that is just a goal, kind of interdepartmental, interdepartmental goal of trying to get that done. And lastly, we're going to increase the use of automation to improve speed and efficiency and processing routine tasks. I think this is kind of one of the things that we talked about in successes that we've had, internal digital signatures. We're looking, that way we don't have to submit things in writing and send them back and forth. We're doing that. We're also going to see if we can't reduce the amount of paper that we have in the department. And that's it for finance and administrative services.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Andy Firestein here to talk about Public Works. As we talk about Public Works this morning, this time last year, I think there was a perception that maybe work wasn't getting done, work wasn't getting done quickly in Public Works. And over the last year, we've done a lot to correct that. I want to lead off by saying that we've restructured and retooled the staff to create capacity within Public Works to take on the work that we accomplished in 2021 and that we will continue to perform in 2022. Significantly, we did bring in parks and recreation within the department that has created greater alignment with the aquatic center and more of those facilities and our facility staff. We've also brought on board many new staff members. You may remember Randy Bowman was solely managing capital projects for the city. He is now a deputy director. We have project managers reporting to him that are taking on many of the projects that you see on this slide. We also have a transportation planner, we have management analysts, a new management specialist, all of whom have been introduced to the department to create capacity and the ability to perform work. Council is very aware of the significant accomplishments with San Pablo Phase Two and Sealy Link. Phase One of Alessandro Alley is complete. We are actively working on Phase Two and anticipate that will be complete here very soon. We also undertook some very significant studies in 2021, both the traffic operations and capacity study, as well as the city's first preventative maintenance study for our bridges. And this wasn't intentional, but if you look just to the right of those bullets, you'll see that those are intended to inform our CIP, not only for next year, but years to come. This will enable us to have more objective criteria to build out that CIP and to make better, more informed recommendations and decisions. And we also undertook a very significant community-based study of Haystack Road that is also translating into work for 2022. And at that same time, we were also designing intersection modification. And at that same time, we were also designing intersection modifications at Haystack and SR 74 and also doing maintenance work within the Haystack Channel and developing a scope of work that is presently out on the street for advertisement for some rehabilitation of that channel. And all of that work is anticipated and planned for 2022. We've also done a lot to improve our communications to share with council and the community what is going on within Public Works and our capital improvement program. For 2022, beyond what I've shared with you, we also are doing our routine as street rehab and maintenance work. We are doing a slurry seal within the North Sphere this spring and also looking at doing a street rehab project on Cook between Merle and Frank Sinatra. We are going to be coming back to council in very short order with more information on PD Link that will be coming forward to council in April. We also will be presenting council with some updates on the Walk and Roll project at your second meeting in March. We, as mentioned, are going to be taking on the first phase of the Haystack Road Traffic Calming Project and also doing some capital project work at Monterey, Fred Waring and the Haystack and Highway 74 intersection. We are developing a five-year facilities master plan. Again, the intent here is to be more proactive, to do more predictable maintenance work on our physical plant. And we have incorporated the Palm Desert Aquatic Center into that work. At your next council meeting, you'll also have some information being shared with you on our neighborhood traffic management plan. In the past, I think the city has been very reactive when it comes to speeding complaints, cut through traffic. We haven't had a lot of tools in the toolbox. This neighborhood traffic management plan will do just that. It will provide the city with a toolbox so that we can be more responsive to those complaints where they come in speeding and cut through traffic in the city's neighborhoods. The last item on here is something very significant as well. That's developing and deploying an asset management software. This is an inventory, if you will, of the city's physical assets that can be used to both track work order requests and to assign resources, both staff and, say, equipment when repair requests are made. This helps us understand both what we have to develop those predictive preventive maintenance schedules and also understand the cost of performing that maintenance work. This is something that I believe is missing in our repertoire and that we are looking to develop and deploy that in 2022. And with that, I'll close out on that Public Works slide. And at this point, I think we are going to transition into the council member priorities and presentations. And Mayor Harnik, you are up first.
Well, thank you. And I just want to set a little bit of a foundation. And this is for all of us. So many of these things that we're going to be talking about are as, as we see by what the presentations, we just got to, to be part of. They're already in, they're going. And one of the things that comes to light, I just want to bring this out. We have subcommittees. We have all these things that we're doing. There is a greater need of communication so that we do know so much of what is occurring and we can have a lot of confidence in that and feel more secure in what's going on. So mine are, and I hope when we determine what our seven or eight, I think we've been granted. We don't put them in any particular order. We give them all equal weight. And it's an across-the-board rather than an up and down when we determine what those projects are going to be. And mine are in no particular order. These are all things that I think are important to the community. So the mall strategy, plan and direction, we've all heard from our community members, the confusion, what's going on there? They think, and most don't have all the information we have. It's not just one owner. There's a lot going on. This is a very complex issue that we're dealing with. I just want to make sure that we get ahead, that we are involved the entire way, that we look at this through fresh eyes and look for adaptive reuse. It's not that we just want to make a better mall. We want to make a better asset for the community, working with all, all of the real estate owners and all the stakeholders who are involved in this. I think it's, it's important for our community and it can serve as a great asset. And right now it's serving as great confusion to everybody who has looked at it always as a regional mall. The CBR study, this is number two on my list. And again, not that it's second to anything. It's just one more thing that I think we need to do. In the north area, we need to really look at that. We have had general plan updates that were kind of based on wishes and hopes and dreams. And now when we're looking at this, we have to look at what's going to be best for the community. What truly will serve our community in the best way. I know we're looking at the appropriate housing for, and we say our workforce, whether we're talking about nurses, our firefighters, teachers, we need good quality living because we don't want those community members or those people who are involved in our workforce as Palm Desert is the center for employment in this valley. We want them to stay here. We want them to be part of the community. So we want to do it in the most intelligent way. And we want to be very cognizant of our environment and accommodating the economic base as we see it going forward. And again, the other thing while we're doing this with the CBRE, anything we do out there, we have to make sure that we are making sure that we treat broadband as a utility, as a basic utility. And so as we build, we must incorporate that fiber and wired and wireless connectivity plan. The next is public safety and I think we probably, or most of us note, noted that. With the increase in cost, we really cannot continue to sustain it. So I think the most important thing we need to do is take a look at the efficiencies and technologies that we can incorporate. And then if we're working into the policing efforts, we want to make sure that we are doing our very, very best to keeping the community and community members safe. Because we can't do anything well if everybody is not safe and secure. So we need to take a look at that. If that means working with our neighboring communities, great. But we need to analyze this and really come up with the best solution. My next is refine and implement landscape palette with a focus on positive environmental impact. And I wrote out, hopefully everybody had a chance to read what I had said there. And I think this is something we can certainly work with our Resource Preservation and Enhancement Committee. It's not an exceedingly difficult issue. We haven't been able to say for years that Palm Desert's ahead on green initiatives and we haven't been saying that. And I'd like us to get back in the position where we are saying that. And these are simple things and a great example is when we had to go in and at great expense, take down the tamarisk that were on San Pablo, which are invasive and they are not an asset to the entire environment when we're talking about plants and our animals and and air quality. So we have to, I would really love to see us just go in there and take some of those. Another great example is if we look at our Mexican fan palms, which quickly grow out of human scale. They don't really provide much. And that, the other name for those are the robusta palm. And they don't provide shade. They're out of human scale. They're messy. They are not native. And just to say, no, we won't accept any more of those being planted is an easy thing to do. So we want to get rid of those heat islands we're creating, bring more oxygen and a more beautiful aesthetic to our community. The CSU issue, which is number five. It's so important and I know we've been really working on it hard. And for the first time in a while, I feel like we are making some progress in this, whatever that progress is, but I feel like we're coming up with some real answers. It's, it is the one thing we all know that is beneficial to our entire region and we need to get this done. It's gone on long enough. And it has hurt enough generations in our region, in our valley, in Palm Desert. And if we are ever going to achieve all these other great things we want to achieve, we need education, we need relevant education and this CSU can provide us with that. So if we come to a point, well, we'll have to explore it further to see how we can take this on and achieve what we've, its original vision, only now it's 2022 and it'll be better. The other thing is explore ATPs and that's active transportation plans, develop programs to incentivize environmentally conscious transportation with safety as a focus. And I think that's pretty simply said. And I know we're working on the Walk and Roll Initiative, PD Link, CV Link, more NEVs. We have to make sure they're safe. And I was looking, what if we, you know, we can use GSI to simply do things and provide this service very simply. And I know the Economic Partnership can do that also. If we were to provide those that skill set to that technology, I'll say, to the city of Palm Desert, we could look at who works here and who could be in a carpool. Could we have three people in a car instead of one person in three cars? So there's a lot of very simple ways we can do this that are not expensive, but they have good impact. So those are my six. And of course, I could have written many more, but I thought I'd spare the staff and everyone else. Thank you.
Okay, I guess I'm next. I'll try to be brief. You see my priorities listed there before you. Let me touch on El Paso briefly, which really cuts to the bigger issue of creating a downtown city core. One of the prominent objectives of our strategic plan of envisioned Palm Desert. Initially, we started out with El Paso, but then kind of backed off. I don't know why, but we did. We went to San Pablo, which is great because it turned out amazing. I think we need to come back to El Paso and do whatever we're going to do with it, whether it's going to be removing a lane on each side, center, median esplanade, or expanding the sidewalks to facilitate quality outdoor dining. But El Paso is vibrant. It's an economic driver and I think we can't ignore it. I think we need to come back, reexamine the consultant's conclusions, start over if we need to, or pick one, but move the redesign of El Paso forward to make it more vibrant and more sustainable for the future. CV Link, great start. I'd like to see us complete the loop from the bump and grind across the wash to El Paso and create a share or whatever and enable cyclists, NEVs, walkers, runners, whatever, to continue on El Paso East to San Pablo to complete the entire loop throughout the city core, downtown city core. Similarly, number three is completing the network of bike lanes. I think that's been touched on. We seem to have multiple efforts, whether it's the CV Link extender, the PD Link, you know, the walkability, transportation study, walk and roll, whatever format and methodology that takes. I hope we can put it all together and create many more safe bike lanes, sharrows, and ensure that every part of our city is reachable by means other than driving a car. Number four, Jan touched on this. I'm frankly a little more direct. It's, it's time to take action. Through our work with Priority One Coachella Valley, we know that this year, probably at the conclusion of the budget cycle in Sacramento, later in this year, we will know whether there's any significant funding for converting our satellite campus to a standalone independent campus. I really, really, really hope that that will happen because that will be a promise fulfilled from 25 years ago. If it doesn't happen, then I think it's a promise broken and we need to take our land back and put it to much better use than sitting there vacant without serving a purpose for residents and for the residents of the Coachella Valley. And I believe that there is a mechanism for doing that. So I'm personally, I'm like there. Number five, of course, the North Sphere is developing, hopefully beautifully, and it needs that park. I, I won't comment further because that's already on our agenda. And then public safety was mentioned earlier. I concur. We're at a point, there's been a lot of studies, consultants, we've thought about it, talked about it. And that one too, I think it's time to bring to a head. Let's figure out what the alternatives are, evaluate them and then make a decision moving forward. Hopefully there's some economies of scale which will assist us with the financial challenges of, of public safety. That's all I got. Thank you.
Wouldn't you know it, as soon as it's my turn, I get a tickle. First, kudos to the whole Palm Desert team. It is so exciting to listen to this and to see things move from last year's initiative column to this year's successes column. I want to just set off fireworks because we're getting it done. And I'm so grateful to staff. This has been a double challenging year between pandemic and staff transitions. And yet the rate at which things are moving from the initiative column to the successes column is just dizzy. So kudos. I know last year was difficult to hear from council that we're getting, we were getting some feedback from members of the public about perhaps not feeling a friendly response at all times. And now you see the systems are in place to help staff accomplish your desire to be customer-focused. So very exciting. Most of what's on my list has been touched upon. I'll just give some additional perspective. First, I agree with Mayor Harnick that we really should think of these as horizontal lists. By giving them numbers, we really don't mean for the things of an F of five or six to be of lesser importance. And in the future, when we do this, we might just delete the numbers to avoid that impression. But I listed public safety first because from the perspective of residents, everything we do to enhance quality of life grumbles if people don't feel safe. And what I want to feature here is the importance of making sure that we are getting smarter faster than the crooks are getting smarter. By thinking not just about how to deploy personnel, but how to support personnel with the best cutting-edge technology so that they can be as effective as possible. North Sphere planning. Mayor Harnick and I are the Subcommittee working on active transportation. And so we were present for a recent Walk and Roll Public Engagement Session. One of the key questions that the consultants keep asking members of the public is, can you walk or bike to your favorite place to hang out? And that really caused me to have a realization. Our last strategic plan put all the focus on creating a sense of downtown, a sense of place, a central gathering location. That's terrific. But we have to learn from the model that Parks and Recreation created for this city. We have large regional parks in each sector of the city, but we've also been very conscious to build small parks in each and every neighborhood so that all people can walk to some green space and enjoy that green space and certain basic park amenities. But for all the ground is covered in the North Sphere, we need to think similarly about small collections. About small collections of restaurants, coffee shops, other destinations that people want to walk to. Uh, for their enjoyment and for their basic life needs. It's such an asset. Uh, to have some dirt showing, to have some uh, playground. And so it's critical that we do that kind of planning before it's all covered. Uh, the mall, uh, in addition to what's been said. Its past success has been key to Palm Desert's success and Palm Desert's image. What happens to it in the future will similarly define Palm Desert's image. It's big, it takes up a lot of space. And so we want to maximize the opportunity. Uh, to assure that this big asset continues to serve our city well. And frankly, our region well into the future. We have lots of new businesses opening in the mall. I've attended lots of ribbon cutting, so there's life there to be uh, built upon. Uh, three of us have brought up. Uh, environmental initiatives describing it in slightly different ways. And it's not my intention to uh, add something. Uh, to staff's lengthy to-do list. Uh, but more often to encourage us to prioritize finishing what we've begun. And beyond that, to really uh, make attention. Uh, to cutting edge environmental solutions embedded. Simply embedded in our approach to everything. Whether it's landscaping, whether it's the city's vehicle fleet, uh, whatever it is. Uh, active transportation, we have terrific work up pending. And quite frankly, when we complete everything that's pending. Uh, it's a link, the recommendations that will come from walk and roll. Uh, neighborhood traffic solutions, we will be the standout city. In the Coachella Valley for uh, active transportation friendliness for. Uh, pedestrian and bicycle friendliness. So I would contend. Uh, that we need to get from here to there first, and that needs to be our top priority. Uh, for expenditure of any flexible capital improvement funds. Uh, we shouldn't move other asphalt until we prioritize the implementation of this work. Uh, to see how far it gets us and CSU Palm Desert for all the reasons cited. Thank you.
I assume it's my turn. Are we ready? Okay. Uh, thank you for this opportunity and my number, minor numbered one through seven. And again, as Councilmember Kelly has said, it's not necessarily number one's the most important. It's just the issues that uh. Uh, I thought would be seven issues to, uh, to, to bring forth in no particular order. Except number one and two have not really been uh. Uh, researched very much at all. My other initiatives that I, I put three through seven. They are all a work in progress. So that's the only difference in terms of uh, importance. Annexation of the North Sphere was brought up about four years ago. And I know before I was on the council, there, there was this economic study done that really went nowhere. And I, I really would like to get this back on our radar. To look at the annexation of the North Sphere because it is in our sphere of influence. And it impacts our city of what development will get done there. It's not a matter of if development will occur. North of the Ten Freeway, but when? And the sports arena is one example of it. We really didn't and don't have much control over that development. So I really think it's important for our city to get ahead of the curve and, and look at the possibility of. Uh, working with the League of Cities and the county. And I believe Cathedral City as they have a, have a stake in it as well, and see if we can come up with the plan. And then number two, uh, as we're all talking about developing the North Sphere. I really believe it's important that we look at having that area north of Frank Sinatra. Part of our school district, the Desert Sands School District. Right now, it is part of the Palm Springs Unified School District. And as we develop all these new homes, a lot of families are going to be living in there with children. Who most likely will want to go to school in Palm Desert and not go to the Palm Springs School District. Nothing against the Palm Springs Unified School District. I just believe when families are buying in a certain location, they expect their children will be going to school in a close proximity location. So I believe those are two issues that I wish we could add to our, our goals. Uh, number three, El Paso, uh, number four, Discover Palm Desert Visitor Center and the Westfield Mall. Those all tie together as we've all been discussing that they're all key economic drivers for our city. It creates uh, uh, especially the uh, El Paso area and Discover Palm Desert Center. That really ties into our vision of having a downtown core where people can congregate, we can hold events. And so I won't spend any more time on it. I believe what we're all in, in favor of it. And uh, going back to broadband, I know that's a work in progress. And just, I want, I put it on my uh, list of seven because I just wanted everybody to know it's very important. And I believe we need to attract technology businesses and others, and we need this infrastructure. We need to keep expanding and doing what we can. And then lastly, Cal State University, all of us believe it's, it's very important. Uh, Councilmember Jonathan brought up one point I hadn't considered before, which was doing something else with the land. And I, I sure hope we don't come to that uh, reality of, of looking at selling the land. Because the vision of having a four-year university can't happen. But uh, like Councilmember Jonathan said, the legislature is going to be looking at the funding. And hopefully we'll get some good news there. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. Um, when I was looking at it, what my priorities were, I thought, you know, I'm going to keep it brief. I know that uh, we can all agree on Cal State. I'm not going to keep ringing that bell. We can all agree on public safety. So I wanted one particular tweak on that, and um, I know we all wanted green technology. So here's where I kind of wanted to dive in. Um, we talk about having a healthy community, and I really wanted to dive into what we can do with that. Um, in a previous meeting, I had talked about bringing folks together for improved public health. So in public health tying into mental health as part of this, how um, we help weave things together to support. Not only our unsheltered residents, but our residents that don't leave their homes and maybe have difficulty accessing medical care. So I think that as we build a safety net, we not only look to expand what we offer, but to extend it directly into the community. So by creating an innovative partnership that creates clinical opportunities directly in the apartments, directly in the uh, parks. So we can take these medical services into pockets where residents may not already be getting care. Um, Todd, do I have access to being able to present the attachments when I get into public safety?
Um, I'll have to ask Heather that question.
Sure. Um, so I, again, I um, was looking at the fact of how we can increase the, the trust that we build with the community. Regarding their physical health and then start to build that partnership to allow um, the mental health.
Sorry, I clicked ahead. Let me get you back.
No worries, no worries. Um, so yeah, that, that's the, the extending the community health partnerships. I have been able to bring lots of different folks on board into a loose, loosely organized collaborative. Um, we don't want to put any of our partners to any um, constraints that may not work within their, their ideas. But the concept is that even as a community, we could apply for grants that could extend to public health. Our higher ed partners would benefit from additional funding opportunities by showing the innovative collaborative nature outside of education. Um, the way that this helps improve the access pipeline from CNA to RN or RN to BSN and, and so on. Um, we are the home of higher education and now we can have higher education help our, our residents. Um, I'll hop ahead in the meantime, if Heather can find those attachments. Um, the block party, that was a nice fun one. I know that my peers would be going um, and um, presenting their points, points for economic development. But I think that with everything we've gone through as a city to plan for at least one or two events that may get dedicated to have it being a community event. The vibe, the energy that we all experienced at that last block party is something that the community needed. So I would like to explore that being an event in um, in the future. And um, let's see again if the attachments come up. But I wanted to build upon the existing ideas, the Palm Desert is, is a green area and a green city. Okay, so here is part of the attachments on the public health partnership. So we have a lot of different divisions, including uh, UCR School of Medicine, who will be expanding their psychiatry residency program to the Coachella Valley. And uh, that's part of what we are looking at collaborating through this entity. So we have reached out to our congressman's office to see how he can uh, bring any additional funding that we could possibly um, attract for this as well. Um, we're trying to get audiology and dental providers. Again, those are services that are our neediest residents. And senior living may not be able to access if they don't have their own caregiver or may not know how to get one. So the budget requirements for the city, I feel, would be uh, mostly in, in managing um, any partnerships that may come through to help connect people. I don't expect that this would be a, a large substantial um, investment. However, some of the things that are being requested um, include tents and, and very minute um, support services. But when the time comes, the staff requirement or staff time invested will be in helping to coordinate some of these um, pop-up. Little um, clinics in different parts of the city. Um, can I get the next sheet, Heather?
Um, just this one here?
Yeah. So again, this is different folks that are at the table. We've got a who, what, where to see where our needs overlap. Um, we are finding out how we can help support the county's homeless outreach team by being able to again, build that trust. Around physical health and then leading into mental health. We have a C-Vag at the table through them and our partnership with Riverside County. Um, Greg was able to be sure that the licensing for the software could be shared between our higher ed partners and C-Vags. So that if one resident or receives services in Cathedral City one week and then Coachella the next, we can find how to customize wraparound services. To, to give more support, um, expanding and connecting additional folks to Cal State's nursing program. Uh, give the next slide, please. Um, COD mentioned that they are at the cusp of revamping their curriculum, and this would expand it. So students would be able to get their clinical hours, serving our students and not just seeing the more acute cases in the hospital. But the most likely chronic cases that they will see on day-to-day practice. Um, so we are again, building our, our collaborative and um, trying to take a culturally competent approach to this. And I think that this also would help again, allow us to qualify for additional grants. Next slide, please, Heather. Thank you. Uh, we can, we can skip that part there. We've already addressed that one. And there, there we go. So the other part is public safety, and this in particular is to address the visibility of pedestrians as they cross that intersection. So in the first picture, you can see a, a resident standing there waiting for a safe time to cross. But the visibility from that intersection doesn't quite allow to see pedestrians while they're waiting. And as I was just kind of parked there observing, I was able to see a lot of folks making very quick, sharp U-turns. Um, from actually of both directions on San Pablo. Next, please. So I've identified where that intersection is specifically. There is nothing to indicate. Um, from either of those sides that there is a desire to cross, and then once the pedestrian is in the middle, it becomes much more dangerous. Next one, please, Heather. And I have observed the very similar situation when I come on my morning commute. Um, there are several areas where pedestrians are, are not utilizing the designated uh, crossing areas. And in particular, the furthest one um, to the bottom of the page. At night and the evening, there is not a lot of um, lighting in that area to alert drivers that pedestrians may be waiting there. Uh, I have seen the um, ways that intersections are, are well lit, for example, next to um. Palm Desert Charter Middle School, there is a flashing stop sign. Um, it could be lit. There could be a lot of different ways that um, can be addressed to prevent any pedestrian incidents. Next slide, please, Heather. We all have in common the idea to be sustainable. Here is a couple of, of different ideas. And I would like to explore some of these with staff and, and see what we can provide. We hear from our developers that they are committed to uh, CO2 reduction and solar panels. But I think that it is time for Palm Desert to return to being the green vanguard. And I would like that if developers want to come work with Palm Desert, then they would know this is the kinds of innovation that we're looking for. I had one developer I met with recently kind of interject and say that he wasn't willing to explore hempcrete. Although there is a lot of sustainable um, carbon sequestering and durability factors that I think we need to explore. Next, please, Heather. In addition to hempcrete, there are, there are already developments and units that are being built with hempcrete, making it not only um, visually appealing. But sustainable and it is much more energy efficient. Next, please. Carbon sequestration can look very beautiful and such as these decorative succulent walls. Um, I was very pleased that staff made recommendations to, I think, believe it was Desert Surf that came back and had a succulent wall. And I think that um, this should be integrated in more places in our public spaces along San Pablo, along El Paso, as we develop the North Sphere. Um, this would be drought tolerant and really would increase again, that commitment to, to green energy. Um, next one, please. Next, please. Um, bioplastics, um, I don't have a lot of great visuals for those, but I do have links and I can happily provide the live links. So the idea is that we remove our dependence on traditional plastics. And there are a lot of very versatile and heat resistant bioplastics that can be um, utilized to make sure that. Residents can maybe even capture the energy coming through the windows to help sustain other areas. Um, some of the bioplastics are suitable for one hundred and eighty-five degrees or up to four hundred and fifty degrees Fahrenheit. We thankfully don't have those temperatures, but the idea that we could create panels and other kind of skylights. That would create uh, new opportunities. Next, please. And again, uh, there is a new place, a new um, biome technology that is safe up to four hundred and seventy degrees Fahrenheit Celsius. So again, we would never experience those here, but the durability of green technologies is on the market. Next, please. Really, I think that is it. Okay, so those are, are some of uh, my ideas. Again, I knew that we would a lot um, have overlap with um, our members who were in RCTC, so we would have a lot of those ideas. I also think that when we talk about attracting STEM jobs and, and green careers, we could start building some of this in and saying, how do we attract partners? That would see our commitment to this level of sustainability. Um, so I believe that is it for me. Thank you.
I'd like to step in for a moment and just talk about where we're going from here. So if we were meeting in person with a more typical goal-setting exercise, your facilitator would be taking all of these ideas, clustering them. And we might step into a dot exercise where each of you has a set of dots that we'd ask you to affix to some cluster of ideas and priorities. To get a sense of where council is at and where council's priorities may be. But we intend to do that, but virtually. So staff has prepared a survey that we intend to send out to council. Uh, to mimic what that dot exercise would look like. So much like I, I said, facilitator clustering these ideas, we have attempted to do that. I think council will see each and every one of your ideas in this slide. Uh, there is overlap between all the priorities that have been shared. Uh, so we've tried to uh, come up with titles that are reflective of all of that. Uh, so it's our intent to send this out to council as a survey. It's the same form that you used to submit uh, your priorities initially. All the dots carry the same weight. There's no weighting in this exercise. It's, it's merely a sense of where council is at, at this point in time with those dots. Uh, so we do have time in the agenda for council to have some discussion before we go through that exercise. Uh, but uh, after that discussion, I'd suggest that we take a short break. Uh, to allow staff to send out that exercise to council, allow council to respond to that survey. And for us to translate that uh, into a table and a chart that we can come back to facilitate. the balance of the discussion this morning. With that, I think that's a really council's priority at this point, if they would like to have some discussion on the priorities and the ideas that have been shared this morning. Before we step into that survey at the break.
Can I hear from the city manager some comments on some of these, or do you have any thoughts you want to share with us on this?
Well, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. I I did, I did want to talk about a couple of things. The the environmental initiatives have come up in several places and I'm just kind of thinking my way through. There are so many examples of of and ideas there that I think we've kind of consolidating that to have our our citizens committee kind of look at putting together, you know, a two or three-year plan. We've asked the AIPP Arts and Public Places Committee to do the same thing. But that's, that's why I think in order to be respectful of all of your comments, that it's something that that committee, we could, we could lump those together and 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 ask the committee to to help us kind of put some strategies in place. I I think that's really the only way to be fair, given that we had so many specific programs thrown out there. I do want to, I do want to talk to you about broadband too. That's that came up and I've had some questions recently about that. We have, we have brought Tim Scott on, who you all met in the working study session a few months ago to reach out to the to the marketplace to get some idea whether or not if we build the backbone, the providers will come and and actually do that last mile connection. Right now, we don't believe that they will. So we're asking him to go out and get us some some very direct feedback from them. We've had, we've been doing additional research with numerous other cities in the area in California in particular, who have made those investments in the market would not come in and and provide that service, that last mile connection. So we're investigating some different options if that is in fact the case, but I do want the council to sort of know where we are right now on that. It's, it's been a little bit disappointing what we've learned so far about the the investment and I think the skepticism, quite frankly, of the the market providers. So we're going to be back to you anyway in the next few months with those results, so you can kick that around in more specificity. Those are probably the bigger questions I wanted to or bigger comments that I've heard today that I wanted to just make some comments on. I I think the I'm happy to add, I actually, I'm actually happy to answer any questions you might have. If there's any clarification from each other or staff that you would like before we break, please, please let us know. I see, uh, council member Kelly's got her hand up.
Thank you. I certainly concur that we want to consolidate, as you suggested. The different ways in which several of us brought up environmental initiatives. And I concur with the thought that today is not the time to pass judgment on the feasibility of specific new ideas, but uh, by talking about referring ideas to the Resource Preservation Committee, I don't want to lose the thrust of my intention when I put that on the list, uh, which was not to approve one, two, or three specific ideas, uh, but to restate Palm Desert's commitment to embed positive environmental solutions in everything we do. Uh, so that it's always a top of mind, whether we're talking about how we pave streets, uh, what kind of rules we have for landscaping, what kind of vehicles we buy for the city. That was the thrust of my intention when I put it on the list, not to secure approval for a specific idea. And on the broadband front, what I heard council member Nistante saying was not so much let's do this specific thing or that specific thing, but let's figure out what we can and should do, which is precisely what you're talking about. Let's get a plan of matches what's feasible.
If I can add to that, please, and I, Sabby, I see your hand up, but just on the broadband issue. Years ago, when we did our general plan update, somewhere in there, we added that whenever we disturbed significantly any of our streets or any, there was any significant construction going on, we would make sure that we put conduit in so that there would be something existing for fiber when the time time came. So I don't know if we've done that. I don't know if we did it in President's Plaza. It certainly would have seemed like a viable backbone for that. And there's so much broadband work being done across Southern California and with C-Vag, and I'm sure there's lots of solutions, but I appreciate council member Kelly's kind of boiling down what what it is that we need with that. And and I suggest everybody put your hand up and you you can see when you put your hand up, take your turn.
I'm I'm not sure if that was granting me permission to speak, mayor, but I'll I'll interpret it as such.
Okay, I'm I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this. This is one of these commit, this, this meeting. This is, we're all council members. We're all one-fifth of this process. So I would like it if we just all jumped in and we can all see when we put our hands up and let's just you know, take our turns as appropriate. So go.
Okay, um, so, um, Todd, and to your point, Andy, to keep today efficient and productive, I wonder, it strikes me that many of our goals are already in process, including some of the ones that I listed, like the mall, Discover, Palm Desert Visitor Center, the North Sphere Park Police and others. And maybe we can just for today kind of take them off the table because they're kind of a given, right? I think staff has heard those things that are already ongoing, that are on our collective list are important to us. Staff is already all over it, so maybe we don't need to spend more time on those, but instead moving forward from this point for the rest of the meeting, address some of the concepts that are kind of relatively new. Gina brought up a couple annexation, north of the freeway, the school district redistricting boundaries, adjusting the school district boundaries. Things like that that have come up that are kind of new today. Maybe that should be our focus and see if we can get to consensus between council and staff. Thank you.
I think, I think we would agree with you, Sabby. We did, we did think about that ahead of time. The CSU one is is pretty easy. That sticks out. Several of you were there. I use, I use the mall for an example, though. There's a lot of work going on right now to just kind of monitor the situation, reach out and touch base with folks. But I'm envisioning an extremely time-intensive exercise over the course of the next year that I think the council and part, part of this, this discussion, it's a, it's kind of that, that initial kickstart into our, our how we're going to spend our time next year, the resources it's going to take, that sort of thing. So that's going to be kind of phase two of that is going to be some significant probably master planning, community input, that sort of thing. And one of the things that's important to rein in today's conversation is there's only so much staff time. And when I look at an effort like that, it's going to be an enormous one. So I didn't think I'd get any pushback from the council, given how prominent that is, but really do need to take the time to explain kind of what that next step is, because you know, the next step is going to be a fairly intensive probably design and community input session that I I expect to be far bigger project than anything we've got going right now from the perspective. So I appreciate your comments. And 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 I think we can kind of differentiate how we spend our time and it is a priority, but what's going to be not only a priority, but a new scope of a priority.
If I may add to that, Todd, I would suggest that perhaps that is something that could be reflected in how council responds to the survey that we're about to send out. One of the unfortunate things about doing this virtually, we had a plan ahead and rather than ask Heather to rewrite the survey, if it's council's thought that perhaps those dots should be placed on new initiatives, that might be something that council wants to think about as responding to that list.
All right, I guess I am up at this point. I never would have thought that I could have entertained the idea, but here we are unfortunately that council member, not, but Mayor Protem Jonathan brought up the idea of taking that land back from Cal State and that, that's a decision that sounds so heartbreaking, and I know it's not an easy thing to talk about. I know that we are all here as as champions of higher education. When I worked at Cal State, I mean, they would show that off, like this is the land we are here because the city of Palm Desert, but I unfortunately think that should we come to that painful, excruciating decision, I think that would be an opportunity to see how that could transform into something that has a positive impact in the community. I know that the Rett Foundation Funding Agreement lasts until just a few years from now, so I think that should that sale occur, I think it would be beneficial to ensure that tax revenue and capital improvements and all that ensure that we protect organizations like the Rett Foundation. So it's heartbreaking, but I I think we need to explore that avenue.
May, Kathleen, can I please jump in here on that specific note? Because this is a perfect example of, you know, we have all these subcommittees working and unfortunately, we don't all know what we're doing and maybe we need to provide some of that information going forward. But the thought was not to take it back and, you know, sell it to put Wally World there. The the thought was to continue on some educational pathway in some way that we will see benefiting our, our and and there has been lots of discussion, but we just want to make sure we're doing the right thing for our community with that. Thank you, Kathleen.
It's the wrong button. Thank you. Yes, I, I understand of why council member Jonathan touched upon that to convey the force of his conviction. But I want to make sure we don't venture into a discussion on the merits of that idea today because it would require vastly more research and preparation and each of us would have plenty to say. Well, I understand of the reasons for saying, let's put aside everything that's already pending. I think it would be a huge mistake in this planning process because ninety percent of what are, what's on our lips is pending. If we put all that to the side and just had two or three other new ideas, it would be all too tempting to embrace one or two of those standing by itself, but they really need to be evaluated in the context of everything else of the staff is currently working on. And so I do think it's critical to keep everything together so that as each of us is wrestling with where we really want staff to prioritize their time, we're mindful of what is pending.
Okay, so based upon the comments of council member Kelly, council member Kelly and Mayor Protem Jonathan regarding ninety percent of all of our goals are already ongoing. And so I'm just rephrasing what I'm hearing, which is we should be focusing on that ten percent of all of our ideas that are not pending and deciding which if any, we want to move forward. Is, am I correct in this understanding?
I was trying to say the opposite.
Okay.
I was trying to say we better stay very, very mindful of the ninety percent that's pending.
Okay.
As we entertain whether we want to add anything to that list.
Okay, so.
I was, I, I was urging, keep everything together. Because it's critical to be mindful of what's already being asked.
Okay, so I guess my question really is then to our city manager. Todd, does staff have any time left? Like, for example, you touched upon the annexation of the North Sphere. That just is going to be too time-consuming if I understand you correctly. With staff's time, so I I really deferred it to staff. Is there any time allotted for any of our new ideas, including my number one and two?
Sure.
The annexation and the school district lines.
There's absolutely time. If, you know, I I think what we're going to ask you to, and I, and I will, I'm going to break my cardinal rule and give you an update real quick. You know, we we have had a we have had an analysis done on annexing the Northern Sphere right now. I I just got the draft in last week. And as you know, we we do not, none of that area up there is in our sphere of influence. For whatever reason, years ago, the this Palm Desert City Council decided that they not want to annex north of I-ten and Cathedral City actually has the sphere of influence all the way to Washington Street. So we we've taken a look at what it would take. I've had preliminary conversations with CAT City already in terms of what it might take to amend that agreement and the Berger Foundation's been very good with getting us information in terms of their development plan. So we will have something to share with council most likely in the next two months or so. We're but we're still going through this draft of trying to understand the finances of its control issues of it and what trade-offs that Last Coast would require. So we are on that already, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't spend a lot of time making that a goal. We owe you a report now. In terms of, in terms of some of the other goals that staff's working on, part of the reason that we had the conversation is even though staff is currently working on some of these goals, we saw a lot of expansion of scope in councils, you know, priorities. And that was the big, that was the big issue here is, yeah, staff is, they're moving, people are busy. We will fit in. I I would ideally like to see five, six initiatives that three or more of you can agree on, and we will budget the dollars and budget the time for it. And if I have to bring different resources on, we will in order to to make sure that we're making things happen that you'd like to see get addressed. So I, my, my advice is, why don't we agree to take the CSU, put it on the side? And then, because there's no question that's going to remain a goal, there's no question that all of you agree on it. You know, and and go ahead and rank your top, you know, seven or eight ideas that Heather and Andy have got a format for. We will discuss the commonalities that surface. Talk about the staff time that's necessary. If if you, if any of you want to make a real pitch, that's something that that you really believe in, didn't rise to the, to the top tier two, then you've got the ability to talk to your colleagues. But part of, part of the importance of this process is from time to time, one, one of you might get very passionate, passionate about a topic you'd like to spend money or staff time on, and it's important for the staff and I to understand that that's what important to a majority of you. And that is the importance of today's discussion is I agree, we all appreciate the the passion you bring, but it's got to be something where three or four of you agree it's worth our time. And that's just how this needs to work as we get into the budget process. I'm hoping this makes your life easier as well, budget time and I did I, and I'm hoping I cleared up some of the the questions here, but I do think it's, I do think it's a smart move and it's a prudent move to put the CSU off to the side and and then take a look at what else is out there.
Yeah, Todd, I appreciate that and I, I'm, you know, certainly it's, we're ready to move forward. Quick note on the annexation. I think that's a matter of reactivating the subcommittee, which of course has already met with Charlie McLennan and and you've done some work, so I I know I'm on that subcommittee. Gina, weren't you the other one on there? Yeah, so maybe that's off the table too. We can just it's ongoing. And my only point in bringing up the the obvious consensus about things like CSU, the Mall, Discover, Visitor Center, North Sphere Park Police, bike swakability, all of that is, you know, us council members love to talk. And I don't think we need to spend a lot of time talking about something that obviously we have consensus on that's already ongoing. Is, you know, us council members love to talk and uh, I don't think we need to spend a lot of time talking about something that obviously we have consensus on that's already ongoing. Um, and certainly any new projects, as we've all learned, have to be weighed against the available time and resources and whether that means bumping something off. Of uh, the the years coming attractions, you know, so we get that and of course we defer to you, Todd, to tell us, hey, we're overreaching. We don't have enough staff, we don't have enough resources, so if something's really important to us that's new, it means either adding resources and staff or taking something else off the table. We get that. Um, so yeah, maybe we do the survey and see where we land.
Well, I'm glad we had today's meeting together. I didn't even know we had a subcommittee on the Northern Sphere, so that's good. All right, I learned something myself. So if we could, uh, why don't we, why don't we go ahead and the direction would be to. CSUs are given, I think the mall redevelopments are given the one caveat with the mall. That's an enormous staff uh issue. We are, we are likely going to be looking at a master strategic planning exercise, a lot of community input. So let's, let's assume that it's just as large of a project as El Paso or Lupin Plaza was probably combined. Um, so I I just wanted to make sure that we understand that from Martine and Eric's perspective. We've, you know, we've got a budget probably several hundred hours in the next year on on that new scope and it it needs to happen.
Yeah, let me discourage taking additional things off the list. Because if you start taking more things off the list based on the fact that they're a given and we have the same number of dots. It produces extra stuff uh that really is not, should not have equal stature. Uh, so let's go ahead and do the survey.
All right, we'll see you in ten forty-five.
I'm, I want to add to that and I agree entirely with what Councilmember Kelly is saying because. What will show up here is where perhaps there may be emphasis that we didn't know. Uh, existed before and we don't want to take things off where we just then have a few things. And that's then those aren't things that we necessarily want, so. Let's make sure that we are communicating abundantly and clearly on the issues that are important to us.
So I think lis- listening to all of you, this has been a a good conversation. Why don't we take? Uh, fifteen minutes, give you fifteen minutes to sort of pick your top priorities. And then I do think once we get down to the, you know, what sort of bubbles to the top, just talk about what the steps are going to be in order to enact those. I I think. It's very important that we walk out of here with similar expectations today. So we will, uh, we'll ask you to have everything into us by ten forty-five, if you'll give us about five minutes. So uh, to ten fifty, we will, we we will tear off what bubbles to the top. And you know, in terms of what gets the most support, what gets a, uh, if there's a clear second tier, but I do think it's important that we sort of talk through. Staff time commitments and expectations and how we're going to move your goals along. So can we see you back at uh ten fifty and have everything into Heather or Heather, I don't know how that works. Someone goes to the machine is going to tabulate everything and we'll be able to, so yeah. Okay, so everything to us by ten forty-five and we'll be back at ten fifty to start the discussion again.
And I just sent an email to all of you with a link to the survey.
Okay.
Thank you.
Need just a moment, Todd.
Okay.
So we have shared on the screen are the tabulations from the poll. They are ranked in order based on a number of responses.
Okay. Okay, so.
May I ask a quick question? We had talked about the grouping of those that were similar, similar. And when we, I, I thought we were going to put them together to make it a little bit more comprehensive in some way. And so when we talk about PD link bike lanes, then we talk about active transportation projects, then we talk about CV link. And even San Pablo pedestrian safety, are these all part of the same concept?
I think this is an opportunity for council to group these a little bit further. What SAF didn't want to do was to take too much license in creating these categories when we had initially received your goals and taking away something that any one of you had expressed. So where there was clear overlap, we created a name that clearly identified that priority, but we didn't want to take that away from anyone.
Thank you. Thank you.
So we can go ahead and I guess the, the top three vote or the top five or six are clear here and we can talk about those, those other projects. But one of the things that we, as we were looking through these, some of them, such as the active transportation, there was a lot of overlap. And I think the discussion that with council is to, to what does that necessarily mean? So we can talk about that one in a little bit more detail if you like, but clearly the CSU Palm Desert Mall, the annexation report back on I-10 broadband have all risen to the top, environmental initiatives, North Sphere Planning, public safety. Okay. So as, as we get down to, you know, and I guess just to get some comment from the council on the environmental initiatives and the public safety issues, there were, there were several aggregate, there are several ideas in there. Do you prefer have a study session to try to, you know, vet out your ideas and put together sort of a work plan that you'd like the, the committees to work on or, or I, I think we'd, I'd like to get some feedback in terms of how you would like us to proceed on those since there are so many sub-initiatives there.
Um, let me address the first issue you raised about active transportation and related topics and what that means. Um, I agree with Mayor Harnick that active transportation, PD link bike lanes, San Pablo pedestrian safety really all go together. And what it means to me is this, we've got the appropriate studies happening. The studies will produce recommendations by, as a priority, I'm saying, let's take the recommendations and build it. Because recommendations can end up on the shelf. And we don't have unlimited capital improvement dollars. Uh, so by listing it, that's what I'm saying. I'm saying let's prioritize spending our capital improvement dollars to actually do this stuff. Uh, that will shortly be recommended to us.
So as a, so just to further refine that, kind of taking all those various studies that we're working on and kind of creating a, a five-year you know, active transportation budget. So we see, we see that they've been named, identified and then prioritize the funding for them. Okay.
Exactly. I, I love the way you put it. Uh, that it's not a question of it happening tomorrow, but having a plan, just like we did with flood control. Uh, the city of Palm Desert pursued flood control very, very methodically and got the whole job done. Uh, so I'd be looking for the same thing here, a five-year plan if it has to be a seven-year plan for three and 10 for some of the most ambitious things. So yeah, but hopefully the key things could be accomplished uh, within a five-year timeframe.
And thank you for that. And I absolutely agree that approach. I'm thinking with the environmental issue initiatives, though, because Kathleen, what you had said is making the statement. I think that perhaps does warrant uh, some sort of study session, some thought of, you know, us sitting together in a room and really looking at what that means to us and how we can put together some sort of template for that.
Is that it, Madam Mayor? Your hand is still up.
Thank you. I forgot to put it down. And maybe that's something we include, by the way, we include the citizens committee on.
I echo the sentiment of my peers in terms of, of plugging some of these in. I think that in addition to making the sustainability and the median enforcements, those easily fit into environmental initiatives. The public safety can fit in as well with the pedestrian issues. And that also falls in with, with our bike lanes. That is a very big issue of safety. So I think that those can easily be clustered together. And I do have a question. If we are able to group these in ways that make sense, would we be able to take a, a secondary vote? Because if now we see that one vote that could have gone to PD bike lanes, that could maybe now go into the other category and would inform how our, our votes would go for the rest of the issues so that we know either pin these for later or these were not of interest. Thank you.
Yeah, we can certainly group these, consolidate them. I, I think the thing I'm concerned about is, you know, they are, they are all subparts of a, of an overall plan. And what I, what I don't want to do is walk out of here with 12 different priorities that we can't deliver for you next year. And that's exactly what we were saying in the early submissions is you, you'd have a, an overall overarching area with 10, 10 different ideas and new projects in it. And I want to be sure that when we walk out of here that, you know, the, the public safety, the active transportation is a great example where we can put together sort of a plan for you, basically say, this is what we plan on working on for the next three to five years. We could probably even build a a mini master plan. I like, I really liked where Kathleen was taking that. We can do the same thing with public safety, sort of build some of these plans, but, but when we start stretching scope, what we're really doing is adding lots of projects on top of things where, you know, and I want to be sure that we're, we're walking out of here with a a, a very, all of us on the same page, what you were expecting. So if, if you want something added to a public safety or an active transportation or environmental type project, that's fine. When I look at public safety, we're really talking about the level of service, technology, that sort of thing that, that you'd like to have a plan on and we can start working on that immediately. Active transportation plan, active transportation projects probably has five or six huge sub-projects under it that we're talking about as well. So that's where we need to probably get back in front of you with a study session, say, which of these are the most important so you can help us prioritize. And I'm seeing two study sessions come out of this already on these things.
There's a tremendous amount of work that's already being done on the active transportation plans between, I mean, there's subcommittees, we're doing a lot of work on that. And I, I think as Kathleen said, we have to just pull it together and put that plan together there. And keeping in mind, there is a tremendous amount of grant money out there for ATPs. And, you know, for us to, if we have uh, plans in place, certainly we become more eligible for them. When we talk about, I'm going to go back to public safety and only because I believe there might have been a subcommittee, I just sent an email uh, asking for the list of subcommittees because we do have a lot of them and, and we probably need to uh, tap into those that are existing. If they need to be changed, we change them. But we do need to look at those subcommittees that are in place up currently.
I guess I was next. Um, yeah, so I, yeah, a, a number of these can be consolidated. I mean, the, the alternative transportation, bike lane, CV link, safe pedestrian, safe bike, all of that is one subject. And I would love for us to have like a five-year master plan that is safe pedestrian, safe bike, all of that is one subject. And I would love for us to have like a five-year master plan that is funded so that we know what physical construction will be taking place each year as part of that goal. You know, I had trouble with like North Sphere Planning and North Sphere Park, the two are kind of you know, part and parcel of the same thing. So I think those two can be consolidated in my mind. And I had similar challenge with public safety budget and efficiencies and public safety law enforcement contract, because to me, they're kind of the same thing. So, you know, maybe, maybe those can be consolidated as well, which kind of narrows down our our objectives and goals for this coming year.
Yeah, I, I agree with what Sappie just said. Park is clearly a key part of the North Sphere. So that's critical to North Sphere planning. With active transportation, I wouldn't be too quick to schedule the study session because we want to first receive the recommendations from each of these studies that's pending. Process those through the subcommittee, give council a chance to digest each study's impact and then, then perhaps have a study session on how staff recommends cohort coordinating our response to those various studies. I think it'd be unproductive to do it earlier.
Okay, any, any other comments on how these are falling out?
I think pedestrian safety.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I think that pedestrian safety still does need to be included when we are talking about public safety. I think that those need to be lumped in. I think that if we look at CV link, PD link and pedestrian safety, I think that those should be lumped together, even if they're not as high scoring. I think that that needs to be indicated that when we do have other priorities, that this is something that we collectively in different places said was was a priority. And it doesn't have to be part of our five-year. But I think that the commonality of them justifies keeping it on a to-do list or a future post-it. Thank you.
I do want to share with council that we are actively looking at the issue identified by council member Keith in the San Pablo.
And I'd like to add too, that those that council member Keith and me I just mentioned are all when we speak of an active transportation plan, they are part of an act. And when you talk about any type of pedestrian safety or any type of bike or any of those active transportation, whether it's pedestrian or bike, bike, they all go together. So the transportation plans always include that public safety component.
Okay, we will, we'll put together some, some thoughts on summarizing these goals on the the environmental, the public safety, we will, in the active projects, we'll kind of list and enumerate the specific studies or projects underneath those as well and work to build. You know, and make sure that we'll ask you to ratify these goals in an upcoming meeting. So we all on the same page. We'll try to put together some timelines to where appropriate, just to build expectations and hold ourselves accountable. I guess that's all we have to, on these right now, this has been very, very helpful and much quicker than we thought. So. So, yeah, I appreciate everybody's feedback too on the prioritization as well. We'll continue to try to refine that process. And in terms of the next, the next phase of these meetings, we, I don't think can meet before 11:30, Mayor. So get back together in that link at 11:30.
Do you, do you want to give us anything to do to prepare ourselves so that can be efficient? Since we have a little capture.
In terms of preparation.
What, what's the sequence going to be at 11:30?
11:30, we'll go into the actual formal review. So it'll just be myself and the council.
So should I correctly understand that it's a time for us to verbalize uh, feedback?
Absolutely. If you've got feedback you'd like to share with the team, this is the perfect time to do it.
Okay, so here's, here I think is the question is, we don't have an agenda. Are you going to speak first and then we're going to speak first? We're gonna.
In close session?
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Glad you said, yeah, I'll speak, I'll be happy to speak first. The idea is it's much more of a dialogue to respond to all the information that you've been provided and the memo that went out to you last Friday and really an opportunity to have a dialogue on anything else that you think we need to be working on and any other feedback you'd like to provide me. Sure. I see Savvy's got his hand up.
Thank you. Yeah, just before we leave this meeting, though, I wonder if part of the takeaway can be a summary of what has been agreed to, a written summary. So that we essentially have a work plan for the coming year. And it occurs to me that it might be really nice to post that publicly on our website or engage Palm Desert and so forth, so that our residents know what our plan for the city is in the, in the year coming up. But does that resonate with people? Does that make sense?
It does. In fact, I've typically had a practice of asking the council to sort of adopt by resolution what the goals are for the city. Slide that right into the budget and post on the website. I'm certainly open to other suggestions, since this is the first time we're kind of going through this together.
I second that motion.
When you said ratify the goals and objectives, that's what you were referring to.
Yeah, yes. I think it's important to always keep our eye on the ball that, you know, this, this was something where a majority, you came together. All of you came together and majority voted that this is how we're going to spend our time. And it frames the budget, frames the work plan for myself and the department directors.
Okay, so are we back at 11:30?
Yeah, we'll be back 11:30. I think before we go, I, I do want to build in, since I have a captive audience here with the directors, I do want to build on Kathleen's comment earlier about the amount of work that's gone on. You know, over the last, over the last year, it's been, it's been pretty impressive how fast the directors kind of in, in, in our management team, frontline employees kind of mobilized and, and really got things kickstarted. I mean, COVID had thrown a wrench in the operations here. You recall, we had to bring everybody back into the office, get everybody back on the same page and and establish new work plans and priorities just to kind of quarter by quarter to start getting this stuff going. And with particular importance, I think the CIP Capital Improvement Program budget was a real source of concern. I think Randy and his team have done a great job of getting that thing moving. And I always think it's a good thing when you see all the change orders and, you know, stuff's happening and nothing's ever perfect when you're planning projects out in the field, but they're getting things done. And, you know, the, you know, the improvements have been made particularly with regard to the development services side, the one-stop shop, code enforcement, the constant surveying of our customers, of the business community. You know, these are big, these were big issues to you a year ago. And I can recall the, this kind of a meeting right before I started. And there were some things said that aren't always fun to hear from, you know, staff's perspective and council's perspective. And I just want to give them kudos, give our team kudos for how they've responded and what they've got done in the last year. It's, it's really impressive. And I hope you saw that. That's the point of the annual report is this is what this team has delivered for you. So didn't want this to, I didn't want to just go into closed session without saying that while they're all on the line here.
Okay, if I may, while everyone's on the line, I know that all the council members were trying to be as efficient as possible with their comments on their priorities. And I wonder, as long as we have a few minutes, if the council members would like to make comments the same note that we just heard from the city manager. Well, then I'm going to take this.
Thank you. I expressed some kudos to the whole team before. Uh, but I really want to return to that topic. Because staff's work this past year has been so impressive and so inspirational. And it really gives us confidence. I think that when we have these conversations, we'd better be careful because what we talk about is actually going to happen. So there's no opportunity to make speeches for the sake of making a speech. So I can thank you to staff from, from top to bottom of for giving 200% this past year. And not only moving so many things from the initiative column to the success column, but coming up with your own excellent ideas about what should be in the initiative call.
Yeah, and just to add very quickly, I think there was some perception, right or wrong, that our, our city was maybe somewhat Icarus flew, flew high and too close to the sun and was on its way down in some ways. And this staff that we have now, I feel so clearly is bringing us back to a high place of prominence where we all, not just the council, but the staff wants to be. And I don't think we say it often enough. We see that, we recognize that, and we so much appreciate it. You guys work hard, you're passionate, you're caring, you're professional. I feel we're in such a good place right now. And I'm very grateful to all of you.
I'll chime in to say exactly the same. This is an amazing city because we have amazing staff. The staff is the lifeblood. I won't take up more time than to say, thank you, gracias.
Well, we're all going to say thank you. Thank you very much, staff. I do appreciate you. And I know I don't say it enough. So there you go.
Well, and if everyone, as you were reading through the 2021 annual report, it was mind-boggling at what has been accomplished and what is the vision coming up. And whether it's in development services or finance or public works, it's absolutely amazing what has happened when this team has come together and just decided they tackle things one after another and they tackle it with excellence. So across the board to the entire team, I say thank you. And of course, it's, it's our home. So it's important for that reason, but it's also important to be part of a team that's doing such great work. And, and thank you all. And this is so, so impressive. Thank you.
Okay, we'll see you at 11:30.